Good evening. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight and participating in our local town government. My name is Ed Cady. I'm chairman of Board Finance. It's seven o'clock, and I'm calling this annual public hearing in order. It's Monday, the 24th. First off, I'd like to leave a legal notice into the record. It was published in the Waterbury Republican on Friday, April 14th, 2023, titled "Town of Roxbury Board Finance Leave Notice." Board Finance will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 24th, 2023, at seven o'clock PM. Roxbury Town Hall and the proposed budget for the town of Roxbury for the fiscal year 2023-24. Copy of the proposed budget will be available for review online at roxburyct.com as soon as possible. Signed, Ed Cady here. So I'm going to do a brief synopsis of all our meetings throughout the year. So yeah, I found it helped me last year doing it, just to kind of remind maybe you guys and the board what we've been up to, but I think people enjoy hearing, you know, learning more of what we've been up to. It was a busy year, and I didn't think it was, though. All right. All right, so first off, I'd like to see our members. Bruce Ham, Amy, sorry. Julie Nantino, Paul Healy, how it starts. And I have the net qualify merger on the speakers. You obviously can make a claim. So all members are right here. All right, so at the May 17th, 2022 regular meeting, Board Finance lowered the mill rate for 2223, 15.25 and 15.4 with a buy down from the town fund balance of $423,379. The tax collector's suspension list was approved. The board reviewed the tax collector's collection rate of 98.84%. The contract with the auditor Charles Haven and company was renewed for one year. The June 22nd special meeting, the Board of Finance interviewed candidates to fill the vacancy. Bruce Hammonds was nominated to fill the vacancy. Ed Cady was elected as chair for the remainder of '22. Then that Falco merger was elected vice chair for the remainder of '22. The reserve capital proposed projects was formally closed out and funds in the amount of $16,358 were transferred to undesigned funds. The general fund continuing capital appropriation proposed projects was formally closed out and funds in the amount of $34,081 were transferred to general fund miscellaneous. At the September 20th meeting, the regular meeting, a subaccount of the reserved capital for Public Works, Bridge and Culverts infrastructure projects was established. Kim Baron reported there are a lot of large projects coming up and requested to establish a subaccount of the existing reserve capital and non-reoccurring funds. Subaccount would have Highway Public Works, Bridge and Culvert Infrastructure Capital Project funds deposited into it. This would help segregate the infrastructure funding for current and future Bridge and Culvert projects. Kim Baron noted the money is staying in the same place and is still part of the capital project. Patrick Roy reported Squire Road, Bridge Culvert was completed. The project came in under $100,000. The original Bridge Culvert was completed. The original pull came in at $800,000. Patrick Roy applied for three grants and was approved for all three. Grant for first Squire Road, $200,000 with a town match of 50. $160,000 was awarded at the town ball in Public Works with a town match of 40. And $80,000 for the Public Works renovation with a town match of 20. The grants total $500,000 with a town match of $110,000. Kim Baron reported that benefits, employee payroll and equipment rental to be paid out of the grant money for Squire Road, Bridge Culvert. Patrick Roy stated the combination of the savings incurred with Public Works renovating their own area and the grant money will allow the town to accomplish more. The November 15th regular meeting, the Board of Finance interviewed candidates to fill the vacancy. Fill the seat vacated by John Hopkins. Julie Nantino was nominated to fill the seat. The Board of Finance approved moving $150,000 plus any car sparring fees from the unassigned general fund balance for the purchase of the North Street lot from Chuck Squire to state. Patrick Roy reported that the $200,000 seat grant was received for repair Squire Road Culvert with a town match of $50,000. ARCA funds had been put aside to repair Squire Road Culvert and could now be designated for other Bridge and Culvert projects. Board of Finance approved the transfer of $250,000 in ARCA funds being moved from the Squire Road project to the capital non-reoccurring fund. The funds can be redesigned or redesignated to other Bridge and Culvert projects as designated by the town. Patrick Roy reported the town received a seat grant to repave the area around the town ball and Public Works. Public Works has a diesel tank in the ground, which is near the end of its 30-year lifespan. He also stated he is looking into having the tank removed before the area is repaved. And he shared that cardinal engineering assessment of the remaining bridges regarding whether they should be rehabilitated or replaced. The assessment ranked the bridge by order of necessity and gives a timeline when the work should be done and cost estimates. At the December 13 special meeting, Board Finance elected their 23 officers, Ed Cady's elected chair, and that Falco merger as vice chair and Hollis Stark secretary. 23 regular meeting schedules accepted. The board accepted a lotion grant of $21,000 upgrade town communications, initial software license and fund reuse towards the purpose of Microsoft 365. Patrick Roy gave an update on the Bridge Culvert repairs. He reported that in '23, it would be looking at the following bridges. Wade Wheel to Battle Swan Brook, Shawle Beach over Roxbury Brook, Judge Bridge over Moosehorn Brook, and Century Hill over Moosehorn Brook. Public Works will be repairing the Box Culvert on Basin Road and Grayson Hill. Minor, minor bridge went out to bid to replace the large Culvert, which is 26 feet underground. Ed Cady, remember, Puteviles commented the town had lost a good one and that he added so much value to the town. Patrick Roy added that the tree line is dedicated to both Peter and Andy Engel. February 21st regular meeting, the auditor came forward and reviewed the 2122 audit with the Board of Finance, and unmodified opinion was received. The library came forward and reviewed their proposed budget for '2324 with the Board of Finance. Patrick Roy reported Public Works Truck 8 was completely rebuilt, came in within budget. Truck 5, which was ordered last March, has been delivered. The old truck was sold, administered a bid for $17,000. Public Works is rebuilding and stripping down the motor for the transportation. The rebuild estimate is $80,000. Public Works will be able to do it for less than $40,000. Patrick Roy reported the town hall will be able to rebuild a lot of the Culverts which need repair and will have to replace them. He also reported for cash, for purposes, the town will need to reserve funds for program reimbursement for welder inspiration. March 21st regular meeting, fire department and ambulance came forward with their 2324 budget as the Decean Center and Region 12 Board of Education. Board of Education reported their budget is increasing 4.67% over the last year's budget. At the April 11 special meeting, the 2324 proposed budget with review, the first selectman, Finance Director Patrick Roy reported the Board of Selectmen approved a 4% salary increase for the town staff. The proposed town operating budget was $4,175,566, which is an increase of 6.44% over this year's budget. The capital improvement program in Region 12 budget factored in, the overall budget was 3.64% higher than this year's budget. Patrick Roy reported the next four Bridge Culvert repairs have been funded with the ARCA money originally set aside to repair Squire Road Culvert. Board reviewed the revenue projections for '2324. Patrick Roy reported the grant list increased $157,302,480 with the net grant list of $849,468,770. This is estimated to increase revenue by 2.41% based on the current mill rate of 15.25. There was a discussion about lowering 2324 mill rate to 12.75. April 18th regular meeting, the proposed budget was reviewed again. The Region 12 Board of Education returned to discuss the last minute increase to the Region 12 school budget. Region 12 is catching up students who started kindergarten during COVID. Students need another year to be brought up to state standards. Parents express their concern that the Board of Education budget hearing and teacher positions added to achieve this. This additional salary is $140,000 benefits. The proposed budget increased from 4.67 to 5.62. Roxbury's share of the increase is $30,929. Jimmy Harlovic reviewed the IT upgrades for '2324. An executive session was held. The Board of Finance changed Board Selectmen's proposed salary increase for town employees from '2324 to 145%. Board Finance accepted the 2324 budget. For the town of Roxbury, it changes to go to the Board of Finance, public hearing April 24th, 2023. So we have a busy year. Yeah, I'd like to thank Patrick for all the hard work with the board as well. Saved the town a lot of money and of course, Kim Baron. Before I open up the floor to questions, I would like to first state that everybody would get an opportunity to talk. I would respectfully add respect for everybody else's time in the room. Limit their, limit their time to two minutes. That's greatly appreciated. So one thing that I've noticed is the percentage of the school budget overall in our budget is going down because every year, the way that they, that the Board of Ed charges the town's percentage of students, and so this is going to be a good year for us. We went down quite a bit, but on the other hand, we have two major projects, so we have to fund. One is Welder's Bridge, which was fully funded. We replaced it fully funded by the federal government. The problem is they want us, meaning the town, to have a fund set up with about, is it 1.2 million? 1.1, something like that, just to pay the bills, and then we will be reimbursed. So what was it, Board of Selectmen and suggested and Board of Finance agreed, we're going to split that up into two years because the bridge project isn't expected to take place until, I think, the summer of '25. So we're going to put half of that money aside this year. And the other big project is minor bridge. There's, there's a pipe under it that's got to be replaced, and the problem is it's 26 feet down. They built it great up. And it's, it's about a $1.4 million project that will be covered 50% by, I believe, the state load, load of bridge program. So we're going to put aside half of that money for the project. It's Patrick and Board of Selectmen left to go on it. And again, half of that money. So right now, as proposed municipal budget is about $5.3 million, but about almost 1.2, 1.3 of it is, is for these projects that just, you know, that have to be addressed. Anybody have any questions or would you like to say anything? Are they the board members like to, like to add anything?
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, of course, please.
Can you maybe add to the question? I'm curious what the reimbursement, what's the timing of the reimbursement, and where does that money get refunded to?
So it would go, I'm not sure of the timeline. Kim Baron probably said that better than me, but would they go back into the reserve fund, Kim? Or we're going to tar?
Yes, you're talking about the federal?
When we get, when we get reimbursed, yeah.
Right, right. It goes back into the fund.
Which is the general fund.
Right, that would be the capital projects.
Okay.
We were talking about the projects.
So this is, this is, yeah, does that answer your question? Okay. Do you have anything others? So like I said, it's, I didn't do the percentage, but it's probably around 20% of our municipal budget is going to be going to these, just these two projects that, that we're being told by the, by the area companies that we, that we're addressing now. So we will be more flush once they get through these two projects. We won't have to, hopefully, I don't think, Patrick, do you have anything big coming like that in the next couple of years?
The only other thing I would, no, on there, no, I mean, you kind of said with the Welder's Bridge, there's some upfront money, but it's 100% budget. It's not going to cost us a cent. It's going to be over $5 billion project. The only other thing that I would add then was kind of added to the budget in a big way was the tennis courts, which get a lot of use over here.
Oh, sorry.
But, you know, unfortunately, they've skinned so many times that the under corse is just not going to sustain it. So there is an investment in that for the safety aspect. I love that the town uses it. It's something that we need to preserve. We don't want it to be an unsafe thing, so, so that's, that's also added in there as well. And sometimes those things kind of come up, but luckily we can take advantage of it, like you mentioned with the local school budget this year, and we can still present a pretty, you know, pretty solid budget to take care of some of these.
Yeah, if I did the math earlier, that's correct. It used to be about a 7:30 split in the school and the town in our overall budget. And is, right now, it's looking like the school got down to 57%, which means municipal's up to 43. So that's, that's, it's unfortunate that we have to spend all this money now, but we have to, we have to live with it on these days. And we're fortunate that we're in a, in a good cycle with the school budget. So it'll just, we'll be more healthy, except that we aren't already, so we'll be more healthy in the, in the future.
And honestly, we've been able to capitalize a lot of this grant money and been rolling it over to other projects. So I mean, those hundreds of thousands of dollars are definitely reflected right back to our townspeople, which I like while we're getting these projects done. So, you know, it's, it's good Kim's help and everybody's help. And also, you can't underestimate how great our Public Works is. If you guys were up at the transportation, you saw that Culvert that we rebuilt. They literally saved like $60,000 by standing it down or paying it, changing it. You know, mechanically and cosmetically, that, that machine was always built with the Public Works. So it's credit where credit is due to do an amazing job.
I saw Saturday, it was great. They're mostly pretty friendly.
Yeah, it's nice. It makes the other ones look horrible. We'll address that another year.
So I, I'd just like to reiterate something that Ed already said in that so many projects that have been accomplished around town, especially as it relates to Culverts and bridges, having them performed by our Public Works Department has saved us, what, close to $800,000, which is phenomenal. I mean, there have been expenses that have been incurred by me to rent equipment for, you know, something that we might use once or twice, you know, since using capital to have that in our town garage. But they are doing so much work and doing a really nice job, but it's enormous, enormous impact for our bottom line. So I'm glad they're doing that, and thank you very much, Patrick.
That's it. But it's not very clear. You guys are doing a great job, so thank you.
I'll add something too, which is the other part of that, which is, which you mentioned, the grants we're getting, both federal and state. You and Kim are doing a great job in making sure we get those grants. They're very valuable and saving us a lot of money. Sometimes, sometimes we have to front out the money, but it's all coming out. So that's three quarters of these big projects will be paid for.
Yeah, so if we, so if we get a negative shift with the school budget next year, we have half a million dollar swings every year, then we'll be in a better position to weather it.
Absolutely. So even though it's been a very inflationary time, where do we keep the budget under control?
And I would also add, there's a, and thanks to the Board of Finance, rewarding our employees here at Town Hall to try and keep up with that cost of living, as you mentioned. I feel like we're taking care of our people in this budget tomorrow. Thank you.
Ed?
Yeah.
On that question, how do we determine what is the appropriate rate of increase for the town? Is it comparing to the surrounding towns? Is there a inflation measure that's coming out of the state or how do we pick that number?
Like for the mill rate or the budget?
For the salaries.
Of salaries.
Because if you look at the compound increases going back a couple of years here, it's significant. And I, I think the world of our town employees, if I was being truthful to you, if you're in the room, I think the world of our town employees. The only thing that I've created up for is like the passing of these big projects that are going to be one-time-only expenses or two-year expenses. They, they come and go. As inflation's easing or starts to ease and say times aren't so good next year, those costs never go away. They're built into the budget.
We're, we're aware of that, but yeah.
And so, and then the benefits flow from the salary line, right? So that's, that's kind of what has been coming, you know, to my mind. I mean, I understood what the last year's rationale was, the COVID increase or social security or something. And that was unusual to me, but I also think we're in a terrible place, and I want to take care of people too. But I do just bring up that one point that when I first heard that 4%, I thought, good, you know, we're starting to moderate a little bit and it's not going to keep going. But then after you came up, executive session was five, and I'm just wondering what prompted that.
Well, just to put things in a little perspective.
Yeah.
The, for each 1% increase for, for the salaries that we're talking about, it costs the town $14,158. So it costs about $14,000 to go from 4 to 5. So we just, we didn't feel like it was, I mean, $14,000, but we, you know.
But there's not, there's not an underlying way we picked five.
Well, there is, we, I personally know everybody that works in the town hall and works on the town crew, and they're second to none. Everybody's pleasant, hard workers.
I'm not criticizing.
No, I know, I know, we're not.
I think the world of the town.
But, but we just want to repay them.
But there's another big issue too, Kathleen, and that's employee retention, because the towns in our surrounding areas, Central County, are paying for the notes to get, to find assessors and the talent that we have in Jimmy, you know, with IT. And that concerns us too, that they, they could leave. They have every right to. We also did do a comp study with the other towns, Washington, Bridgewater.
Oh, you did? Oh, yeah. So that's my question.
Yeah, I mean, it's, they're all very friendly. They speak regularly.
But that's, I want to make sure we.
Well, we're totally aligned.
Doing our homework because, yeah, it goes into the prominent.
Yeah.
Cost of upgrading the town regardless of what happens to your community.
Right.
And it's, and it's still below the rate of inflation, so inflation comfortable.
Yeah.
Um, do you, do you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, no, I wasn't even going to speak back part, but I wanted to, to take them up.
No, I'm fine.
I wanted to ask, but it's been something that's been on my mind for a while.
It was a good question, so thank you.
And I'm glad to hear the comments there. Love to see them.
Good.
But, you know, not a big deal. And officially on record that I think the world of the town employees.
I didn't say anything.
That's you, we know.
Do you want to add something, Natalie?
No, I, it's, no, it's true. It's, I mean, it's employee retention. There are a number of open positions in surrounding towns for various people like Finance Director or IT people, et cetera. They can't fill the jobs, even when they're really ramping up salaries dramatically. So we think, you know, look, something could happen to any of our employees tomorrow, and we have to try and fill the, we need to, we would need to fill the position. But rather than being hired away or.
Some of them are very difficult.
Yeah, and rather than being enticed away by some big flashy number or whatever, we would like to retain our institutional knowledge and, and keep them here.
Patrick, I have a question for you. I know there's a number of employees that, Town Crewmen that work in Town Ball that create on AFT or the Fire Department, which is, which is great because we don't have coverage during the day.
And if they do, we have an understanding, and it's kind of interesting when the tone goes up because everybody, it seems like every office has one of the, one of the radios. So they'll tell you, if you've got a lot to do or Kim has a lot to do, say, or go, go, or Kim will go. And it is like a backup. Our Public Works and everything on the Fire Department, they often jump in when they have to. But it's just kind of a thing that we've always done. I support it 100%. It's our own people from our town that are helping our town, so it's just a good practice.
I'm just thinking off the top, I had 17 people, you say?
Oh, yeah.
Combined, combined fire and China.
Yeah.
Probably be a good number, yeah. And we discussed it on the meetings, if, you know, we didn't have a volunteer, if we had to pay people, the budget would be, either the town. So it's actually saving, saving the town money.
So for anything that's like labor costs, like, do you guys project that, like, 2% every year, 2% increase every year, or 4% every 2 year?
Far races.
Yeah.
It, it varies from year to year, right? I mean, but.
I wouldn't say we really do projections per se, because the one thing we can't control is the school budget. So that is such a huge lever in the whole process. But we're certainly cognizant of the costs, benefits. We're always looking to find ways to save money, believe me.
Oh, no, I, I mean, I've found, I want to watch some of the term guys and not know if it's going to go up. So I think there's.
Well, I think it's been proven, and I think our employees and staff feel quite confident.
Just to put things to you in perspective, town employees are, we have top shelf mechanics, a lot of CDL licenses.
Yeah.
Heavy equipment operators. These are people that are damn near impossible to replace. I, for one, don't think the 4% is high enough. Social Security was 8.7.
That's where we made it 5%.
So, you know, so I think the 4%.
That was last year, 8.7.
Yeah, we increased it, we increased it to five.
This year, too.
This year, about 6.
I think that, yeah, we're, we're getting off easy.
Off in order.
I think it's very reasonable.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. I thought some of these employees were under collective bargaining agreement and take some of the salaries.
Yeah, so the, Patrick could probably speak better to that. The, it's the town crew, right?
Yeah, for the town, Public Works, our team serves their contract, we negotiated last year, and they're on four-year contracts, so they'll be renegotiating in 2025.
So those salaries are set by?
Those are already set. That's for your Public Works teams to.
And I think I read those were at 4% the first year, 2.9 in the following year.
I believe, yeah.
So.
So one, one thing that we typically do is, well, let me back up a little bit. The state statute, not law, I don't think, but they, like towns, keep between two and a half to three months' worth of operating costs in reserve. So for us, that's, you know, we got proposed budget 12.2, so it'll be a little over $3 million at 25%. And that's what we typically do, we will buy down the budget, which depending on how much we got in our reserve fund. So right now, it's proposal 1275. We're going to have a meeting right after we close the public hearing. Everybody's welcome to say if they'd like, or anybody that would like to say. And we're going to set the, if, like another stage or where it is, which is what it looks like, we may even buy it down a little more and maybe, maybe lower the mill rate a little bit more.
So that was my question, was Bruce, at the last one of the meetings, asked for some kind of spreadsheet to say, what's the headline of the impact on the, on the new bill rate to, across the assessment? And was there a way to do that? And I wondered if you did. What does that mean?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the effect on an individual depends on how much their assessment changed.
Correct.
In general, if your assessment went up less than 20% or 18.9% of something, chances are you're going to have a lower tax next year than this year. Goes up more than that, it would increase, subject again to what, how we set the mill rate. I think it's hard to, it's hard to generalize too much because the grant list includes a number of different elements. There's commercial, there's residential, there's properties that have been approved and properties that have not been approved. So for example, if you had an improvement in your property, your budget, where, where we certainly have cases where assessments have gone up 40%, but that's because people have improved their properties. So they're going to obviously face a big increase. It looks like about 18 to 20% maybe is about the average increase, although individual properties will differ. For those people, they shouldn't expect much change, I don't think, in their taxes, one way or the other.
So this, and I'm in that category, so I zip that. But I was more worried about people who's on the higher end, who also may be on fixed income and lower abilities to absorb, because that's kind of.
Well, if they're on fixed incomes and they made big improvements to their property, they're going to have an increase.
Well, I'm, I'm a good example of that. I haven't made any improvements to my property. My name is Pam Southland, I'm at Churchley. And my assessment went up 35%, and that was after I appealed, down from 38%. So I, I do have concerns. And it's, you know, it's, it's the one comp down the street for somebody who got their house and built it on the ground up in the old colonial, and now I'm, you know, my house hasn't been improved in sort of five years. So it seems a little unfair, because there aren't a lot of comps in this town for certain properties.
We got nothing to do about the assessment.
No, no, no. I'm speaking to Kathleen's point that you responded to.
No, 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 you, I'm speaking to Kathleen's point that you responded to.
Yeah, well, that's what I said, I mean, I said to it, I didn't.
And, and you had said about people who made improvements, not just saying I didn't make a improvement, but. It might sound thirty-five percent.
That's a little bit surprising to me, but I, I, I don't know the inner workings of the assessment.
That's, that's a great point. Yeah, so.
That's, that's unfortunate.
It is unfortunate.
Yeah, and if I made, I ran the numbers to look at my taxes, for my taxes, based on the revaluation, using the revaluation, I would be at ten point five bills. So it's equal to what I'm paying now, so going up with my valuation and going up to twelve, twelve, twelve and three quarter, that's gonna be, you know, a big increase from, you know, where I am. I'm just saying, you know, you guys, Patrick, see you later.
Obviously, there are cases both ways.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna buy down.
You know, reductions, and then other people are gonna have increases, I think that's the nature of the beast.
It, it's particularly prevalent here, because we don't have, because the, the housing stock is so varied, um, it's not like we have cookie to our houses, and I think a lot of it, and again, we, as mentioned, we don't have control over it, we, we have to hire a firm to do that, I mean, my own assessment went up thirty-one percent. My taxes are going up nine point eight, or nine point three percent, so, yeah, I'm not happy camper about that. But, um, at the same time, we, um, we have to educate our children, we have to have public services, we, you know, we have to provide for the budget, but I, I'm scratching my head over how they, how the assessments happen. One of my, I haven't done anything to my house either, um, my neighbor, his assessment went up forty percent. Um, I'm sure he's not really happy about that either, um, but, uh, people along my route, they're only getting the same kind of increase increases, or assessment increases, I should say.
Yeah, so, so we're look, we're gonna look to buy down the budget as much as we can, probably still, like I said, the state statute wants to keep twenty-five percent in reserve and case for some reason, you know, no money comes in, which seems reasonable, you know, can foresee it happening, but.
Nice, is there, you guys mentioned a lot of savings on projects, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars or so, this money coming back from grants and everything. Is there any way to turn those savings somehow to a reduction of the bill and the tax, you know, reduce the taxes?
Yeah.
The taxpayers have to pay?
Uh, Patrick, please correct me if I'm mistaken, but I think a lot of that money that we got back, you've already applied to other projects.
Well, specifically with, like, the ARPA funding, so we, I got a, this deep grant for that. Um, so because those were already grant funds, they didn't be allocated to, within the same category, bridges and culverts, so we just took it from one bridge and culvert project to another. Uh, because we funded it with a steep grant to the ARPA funds that we were gonna pay for it from, and now turned it into the renovation for the bridges. So there, there's allocated funds already that we have to keep, kinda keep in the same bucket, um, so yes, it allowed us to do more stuff, but I, I couldn't have done that as a tax offset. Uh, but I think it's good to note that the average increase was twenty-two point seven six, I believe was the last number, twenty-two point seven six, so the average was twenty-two point seven six, but there are plenty of exceptions on properties all over, and some went down, some went up. Um, and it is, sometimes it is your neighbor or somebody that just, you know, spent, now, you know, took a million dollar house and made it a four million dollar house, and now everybody's values are going up in that, that's why we had that process, but there's, it's all in the math, I'll be honest. Um, there, there are exceptions to everything, especially in this, yeah, I don't think there's any two houses alike in town, you know, it's.
Anybody else?
Um, yeah, I have a question, that, where can I find the new assessed value of my home, is that something that's publicly available?
Yeah, you should have been mailed.
Yeah.
We have it.
Okay. I haven't seen it.
I think it's on.
You didn't share, Paul didn't share it with me, he didn't want me to be.
I didn't want you to have it in the agenda.
Did I, I checked yours, you're okay.
I don't know.
It's public.
Until I see it.
Yeah.
All right, we have it.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I just had a question, um, just for clarification, on highway and public works, um, the MORE, what, what is that?
Maintenance, yeah, Patrick.
Maintenance or repair expense. All right. So that's all the trucks, all the vehicles. Gotcha. Yeah, maintenance repair expense.
That's a good.
They can fit in the box.
That's, that's a.
Do that long.
That's a good question, thank you, we, there's a lot of acronyms here, so. Kim, would you, is there anything that we missed, would you like to add?
No. I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you both for your hard work. Yes, Ms. Henry?
I was just, yeah, thank you for all your hard work. Um, the, here's just a couple of things that jump out that are, that like, like, turns into that, like, you know, that, it's not a lot of dollars, but it just looks with a percent.
That's, they added a whole line, um, for consultants.
Wow.
So that was added to it because there's been some, um, questions and challenges to things.
Oh, yeah.
Bringing in an extra.
My friends and, but.
Yeah, um, attorney fees went up, there's a whole bunch of different things on there that, you know, your extra fees or whatever.
Yeah.
What else?
Um, the ambulance, I mean, that, that might be for the ambulance, like the ambulance.
That is for medic four.
Yeah.
So that is the new, new Vans contract that's doubled, it's doubled, this is ninety-six thousand, um, your last budget was, what, twenty-six, I believe, twenty-seven? And then last year we went up to forty-four, uh, going with Trinity, then they dropped us, we are still in our, uh, group with medic four. Um, this is the only way we can do it, the best way we can do it right now, uh, what made that go even higher after through this, um, was New Milford pulled out. They decided to do their own, they wouldn't take anybody with us. So we went drag, we had several meetings on that, uh, but that's a huge burden, but we, it's something we cannot do without. Uh, New Vans is kinda like the service in our area, they now have, uh, New Milford Hospital, Danbury Hospital, um, this is actually the best we can get, and there's gonna be no question as to the quality of their service for the record, but yeah.
It's just clarification, but that, uh, what's it called, the, uh, uh, medic four?
Yeah, yeah, medic four.
Is for severe cases.
Yeah, they're basically a call backup to our, so they have, they have a ser, serious air, uh, injury or something, they're, they're communicating with it, and uh, it, they're gonna have an on-call medic all the time, it serves as all of our towns, uh, with Lori and Ken, uh, Washington and us. But they're usually here with a couple of minutes, uh, but they actually, they have a fly car and they fly to the, the scene, so no matter what the situation is, that person or the ambulance travels to them and meets them, uh, so they can get, uh, immediate treatment, uh, on the way to the hospital before that.
And if that person did need, they have other?
Yeah.
Where are they gonna be stationed now?
New Milford. New Milford is New Vans, so.
They're, they're, at their, at their ambulance station?
At the hospital. No, New Milford Hospital, hospital is New Vans, so that's, that's where they're gonna be.
Anybody else? Thank you. Uh, before we close this public hearing, does anybody have anything else to add? Yes?
I just wanna thank you guys, you know, volunteering can be a thankless job, I've, I've done many tasks, you know, and, 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 I mean, I don't think really, really understand how much work, time and energy goes into this, so I really appreciate this document is quite something, so. And I also appreciate the fact that mill rate's going down like two and a half points, that's, wow, that's.
Well, tha- thank you for the kind words.
Thank you, great, thank you.
I, I think we got, I think I speak for everybody that, we have a great team, everybody's very respectful of each other, we don't always agree on everything, but we talk it out and come to a much, to a common ground, and it's, um, personally honored to be part of it, so. And Kim and, and Patrick and, and Boris, like, and all the, the hard work they do.
Well, I've watched all their meetings, as you probably could tell, and it's my first year doing this, and, um, I was very impressed with the amount of work they did.
Well, thank you.
And, and your thought from this, so just.
No, there's, we all have mutual respect, there's no, no politics gets involved, it's just a best for the town, really, there's no sense. And, um, you know, Patrick keeps us informed, well-informed, he comes to every meeting, and there's always the end of the meeting, it's the first eleven reports, so he fills us in on everything we need to know, so, you know, we're, you know, we got our ear to the ground, so I said. Anybody else before we close this public hearing?
Just another thank you.
Well, thanks, thank you.
My wife's happy.
Well, that, thank you for the acknowledgement. Okay, I'm about to close the public hearing, this is number one. We have a motion to close the public hearing.
Set up, second?
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, well, thank you all for coming out and participating. All right, um, I call this special meeting to order seven fifty-five PM at, on April twenty-fourth in, in Roxbury Town Hall. All members present, Nanette is on the phone. I thought the, for the lack of questions were asked, I thought the budget hearing went well, so thank you, everybody. Um, the only order of business that we have now is to put a dollar figure on to go to town meeting on May sixteenth, is that correct?
Yes.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read the dollar figure out loud, then I'm gonna add for a motion in a second, and we can discuss it, and then I'll add for a vote. So the dollar figure being presented is, um, or actually, I'll make the motion, I got the dollar figure in front of me. I make a motion that we move the new budget number of twelve million, two hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars to go to town meeting.
Well, can I, can I interject here?
Yeah.
You, you're only gonna be voting on the operating and capital budget.
Oh.
Because the school, the school is voted on at a separate.
Thank you for stopping me, okay, I do have that number. Let me back up a little bit, so we're just gonna be, be voting on the municipal side of things. Do we have a motion to move the municipal side of the budget of five million, three hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars to the town, the annual town meeting, which will be May sixteenth at seven o'clock in the Roxbury Town Hall? Clear a second?
Seven.
Second by Holly? Any discussion?
This is what we had before, this is.
Nothing, nothing's here. No, we had to, we had to say, we don't, we don't feel really upset about anything except for the, the assessment going up, which is another thing.
You don't have that far, it's not us.
No, it's not us.
I do.
All right, so we have a motion, a second, and discussion, no, no comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, staying, passed unanimously, unanimously. All right, I have a motion to close the special meeting at seven fifty-eight?
To move?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, passed unanimously, unanimously. So, thank you, everybody, thank you, Nanette.